Welcome everyone to the Eugene City Council meeting for April 22nd. Welcome to everyone here and at home. We're going to start out this evening with some ceremonial matters, but before we get to the ceremonial matters, we have a couple comments that I've asked our councilors to make, Councilor Poling. Can you start things off?
Thank you. And I'm not going to ask for a formal moment of silence, but I just would like everybody to take a moment sometime this evening to just reflect upon an event that happened two years ago today. We lost one of our finest as a result of a traffic stop that Officer Chris Kukuln made on April 22nd, two years ago in the afternoon on his way home. You know, whenever we lose a police officer, it's an attack against every citizen of our city. Officer Kukuln was following the tradition of his father, doing what he loved to do, doing the best job that he could do. He was well-respected in the community as well as throughout the law enforcement community. And he is deeply missed. And I would just like everybody to remember the fact that we did lose one of our own two years ago today. As a result of that, there's a couple of bills currently going through the legislature up in Salem, one of which is to extend the period of time of the hearings for people that have been committed to the state hospital because of a mental defect as a result of criminal acts such as the person that was responsible for taking Officer Kukuln's life. Currently, the family has to undergo six months. Every six months, they have to go to Salem to sit through one of these hearings to determine whether or not this person is mentally competent or not. The legislation that's currently going through is going to extend that to a two-year period. And that's primarily so the families of officers that are killed in line of duty as well as, you know, any families of victims as a result of mentally incompetent people don't have to relive that tragedy every six months. So again, I just ask that everybody take a moment sometime this evening to reflect upon the city's loss. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Poling. And now, Councilor Pryor.
Thank you. I also wanted to take a moment to acknowledge our desire to stand in solidarity with our friends from Boston. As a former New Yorker and a person who grew up on the East Coast, I appreciate how important it is that we all stand together at a time that's difficult. And I know that New York and Boston are often rivals, but there is no better time to stand together than in adversity. And so even as far across the country as Eugene, I would like for us all to take a moment, don't have to do it right now, to remember our friends in Boston and how we stand together with them in their time of need.
Thank you, Councilor Pryor. So I'm going to recognize, sincerely recognize what was brought to, what was just said. And I will take my moment to remember, but I'm going to switch gears now to a much happier thought. And that is, we have a ceremonial recognition of that we're very proud, proud, proud to be the home of the University of Oregon. And we take delight in honoring the university's many contributions to our community, including the academic and athletic excellence of our student athletes. Oregon women's athletes is really on a roll. And we are proud to take the opportunity again to recognize that. Earlier this year, we had the volleyball team here to congratulate them. They've been hanging out on our website for quite a while. And tonight, we honor the Women of Oregon Track Team, who recently came from behind in an outstanding team effort to win their fourth straight NCAA indoor title. Give 'em a hand. In doing this, Oregon became just the second team to win consecutive four, consecutive NCAA indoor titles, joining LSU, which won five straight from 1993 through 1997. The team was led this year by National Coach of the Year, Robert Johnson. Robert Johnson, would you wave to everybody? And of course, the program has grown and developed in the last several years under the leadership of Associate Athletic Director Vinnanana. I believe he's in the room somewhere.
Right over there.
Right over there. I see a hand behind the room. And with Coach Johnson, the track team student athletes we have with us are, and you guys, you're already standing, so you'll just wave when I say your name. Laura Rusler, Jenna Prandini, Annie LeBlanc, Alexi Pappas, Anne Kesselring, and Becca Friday. Give them all a big hand. The indoor championship was truly an all-around victory, with 10 of the 11 women who competed scoring points for the Ducks. Although scoring in many events, Oregon took first in only one event, the 4x4 meter relay, which finally locked up the victory for the Ducks. The relay team of English gardener Chisoba Okadobe, Laura Rusler, and Phyllis Francis set a school record, 3 minutes 322. No, what is it? 3 minutes 30?
3:30 22.
3:30 22. That was smooth. Jordan Hesse was also a key for the Ducks, finishing as runner-up in the 3,000 meters and fourth in the 5,000, for a total of 13 team points. Outstanding performances the meet also came from English gardener runner-up in the 60 meters, Laura Rusler runner-up in the 800 meters, also breaking a 31-year-old Oregon record. Phyllis Francis, fourth in the 400 meters, Jenna Prandini, fifth in the 60 meters, Becca Friday, sixth in the mile, and Alexi Pappas, sixth in the 500 meters and eighth in the 3,000 meters. Okay, one more time. Never had a chance to recognize the women's cross-country team, which also won their NCAA national title, Oregon's first since 1987. Some of the same women from that team, including Jordan Hesse and Becca Friday, are also members of the team we are honoring tonight. So double woo-woo. And now, many of these young women are also having great success in the outdoor track season, including several outstanding performances at the Mount Sac Relays this week from English gardener Becca Friday, Anne Kesselring, Jenna Prandini, Phyllis Francis, Chisoba Okadobe, and Annie LeBlanc. The student athletes on this championship team are also amazingly talented in the classroom. Among those with us tonight, Anne Kesselring is a two-time National Academic All-American who has a 4.4 GPA in Business Administration. Anne Kesselring and Laura Rusler have both been named to the Pac-12 All-Academic Team. An elected campus, she is graduate student and a transfer from Dartmouth, was a finalist for the 2012 NCAA Woman of the Year. Very cool. Hesse, who couldn't attend tonight, is a two-time First Team Academic All-American and a Pac-12 Scholar-Athlete of the Year. Whoa. And that's just a sample of the academic successes members of this team have achieved. I'm sure we've missed some. So to all of you, as well as all of your teammates who aren't able to be with us tonight, we thank you for your hard work and the credit you bring to the university and to our community. We congratulate you on your academic and athletic achievements, and we wish you continued success this season and in the future. And in one word, everybody, go Ducks! So why don't you guys all come up front? And I'm going to come down and give you the certificate, and then we'll all have a picture taken together, okay? Congratulations. Nice work.
Good job, Coach. Congratulations. Good job. Nice work. Congratulations. Good for you. Nice trophy. You barely threw it. Nice job.
I should have stood up.
Let's go stand over here.
We didn't do anything to get this picture.
Yeah. Right.
You need to be over here.
Quarter turn.
Get closer that way.
You're beginning to be blocked.
I'm screwed up.
This is a swimming trophy.
I always feel funny doing that. I didn't do anything in my picture.
The trophy in the case.
Already. Now to work. Public forum. A public forum is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the city council on any city-related issues, except for those items which have already been heard by a hearings official or are on tonight's agenda as a public hearing. Each person will have three minutes to speak, but it's perfectly okay to take less. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. The timer and lights indicate the time you have to speak. The red light indicates the end of three minutes. I'm going to open this forum, and we have 34 people signed up. First up, Lee DeVoe, followed by Dennis Marisol.
Hi. My name is Lee DeVoe, and I live in Eugene, and I'm a resident of Board 7. It's a little difficult to follow, I have to say. I'm here to talk about the camping ban, which I think is not such a happy subject. So I apologize to change the tenor of the meeting here. So as I've become more aware and informed about the camping ban, it's become apparent to me that this is a cruel and callous policy, and that its intention is to deal with unhoused people by making them invisible. And every time a group of people at a certain site become more visible, they are roustied in order to drive them back into the shadows and make them invisible again. Everybody knows people don't disappear. They simply get tossed and pushed into another area until they're tossed and pushed again. So due to the work of sleeps and other homeless advocates over the last few months, I think that this policy, which is so cynical, has really come to the public attention. And I hope, you know, really has come to the attention of the council. And I'm very pleased that you are going to be having a work session and talking about the camping ban on Wednesday. And I want to say that this is an opportunity, that this policy has now been exposed for what it really is, a policy that is in no way helpful and in fact is damaging to everybody involved. I think it makes the police more cynical. I think it makes our community go deeper into denial. And I don't think it saves any money in the long run. The money is just buried in other ways. So now that this issue has been raised and is no longer in the shadows, I urge you to do the right thing, to modify the camping ban. At a minimum, to allow people certain hours of undisturbed sleep where they're not going to be roustied, and they're not going to be given citations which they can't pay. They're not going to have their stuff destroyed. And that really what's needed in an interim solution is to have some established sites where people can sleep in safety and some modicum of health. Thank you.
Dennis Marisol is next, followed by Barb Prentice.
Mayor Piercy, Manager Reese, and Honorable Members of the City Council. My name is Dennis Marisol. I live in Vanita, however. I have spent thousands of hours working with people without a permanent residence and the disadvantaged in Eugene, so I feel I have some knowledge about the situation. It's easy to paint everyone with the same brush, but every person has their own story. Many, many people out there are there through no fault of their own. So I'm asking the city council to modify the sleeping ban and curfew laws to allow those with no other place to sleep to be able to sleep on public land from 9:00 PM to 7:00 AM without being awakened. That the city unlock the park bathrooms and provide porta-potties and garbage collection to known sites where large numbers of the unhoused are forced to sleep. And that the people currently camping on BLM property behind Fred Meyer in sensitive wetland areas be allowed to move to adjacent city, to adjacent dry, non-sensitive land belonging to the city, and to be provided porta-potties and garbage collection. Thank you.
Thank you. Barb Prentice is next, followed by Jerry Smith.
I'm Barb Prentice. I live on Royal Avenue, and I'm in Greg Evans Ward. I spoke two weeks ago about being appalled by the actions of the police who arrested the campers near Ferry Bridge in the early hours of Friday morning, April 5th. My distress was greatly increased as I heard some of the campers who were arrested describe the actual events. I was especially upset to hear that the women, some quite young, were subjected to a search with no female officer present. I have since learned that a woman who was arrested must request a female officer. This policy should be changed immediately. This is a clear abuse of police power. A young girl should not be expected to have the courage to stand up to several male officers and demand this right. It should be a matter of policy. After the public opinion portion of that meeting, Councilors Soretta, Zelenka, and Evans indicated that they could not speak about the incident because of an ongoing internal investigation. I expect the right, I respect the right of the police and the city to conduct such an investigation. However, I would like to know when we might hear the results of this investigation and exactly what it entailed. I would ask the city attorney to inform the council tonight at this public meeting when the results of this investigation might be made public. There are serious allegations of improper behavior on the part of the police on that night, and we should not have to wait indefinitely to find out how these wrongs will be corrected. Thank you.
Jerry Smith is next, followed by Lawrence Siskin.
I'm Jerry Smith, a retired social worker at 51 Saxon Way in Eugene. I'm a volunteer at First Christian Church, the Egan Warming Center, and Interfaith Occupy. I say let's let our poorest citizens have a place on the commonly-owned ground we share with the citizens here in Eugene. Helpless refugees, America's war on the poor, have lost jobs, homes, caring services, and even the right to exist here in Eugene. False fears curse the abandoned poor as dropouts, bums, crazies, dopers, wetbacks, niggers, and homeless. Fear then spreads about those people who are lost assets to our community. We no longer provide work or income to many disabled people, nor to many workers who can't find enough employment. They often become homeless people. Homeless people are reviled, persecuted, and blamed for all manner of evil falsely. These are the very people who Jesus said are to be blessed. I'm asking you to bless our poorest citizens by allowing them to take shelter in safe, legally entitled, emergency places to sleep. For too long, the city council has put off blessing Eugene's poorest citizens. The city didn't cause their economic abandonment by greedy corporations, by the state, or by the federal government. Our council majority surely means to find ways to bless Eugene's needyest citizens by modifying its rules. Our faith community has supported for years now the unsheltered on extremely cold nights. Providing such shelter every night is beyond the faith community's capacity to sacrifice their own activities, but they would help in other sheltering locations. Many unchurched, trained volunteers also provide much of the help in the Egan Centers. Many of the currently homeless persons are safely self-governed, cooperative, and helpful. Those with substance abuse problems and uncontrolled behaviors need more supervision in separate areas, not inflicted upon the more responsible persons who can self-control. It would be great advantage to the community, however, if the uncontrolled persons could also be sheltered with supervision rather than be sent hiding in our alleys and woods. Homelessness should be considered an emergency. We should ask the state and federal government for help. Opportunity Village can be a beginning model for helping. Closed toilets are a biological hazard to the whole community. The camping ban makes no sense.
Thank you. Lawrence Siskin is next, followed by Leslie Robinett.
Good evening. I'm a resident of the Weta. I think it important that those with no other place to sleep be able to sleep on public land through the night. Why prosecute the poorest in our community with even poorer health than they already have by interrupting their sleep with harassment? Please modify City Ordinance 4.815, the sleeping ban. Please unlock the park bathrooms and research where the public provision of porta-potties and the civic institution of garbage collection would improve the urban environment for the entire community. I am particularly concerned that people currently camping on BLM property behind Fred Meyer, a sensitive wetland area, be allowed to move to adjacent, dry, non-sensitive land belonging to the city and be provided the same previously mentioned basic services. I realize asking for these changes challenges us by potentially bringing the problems of homelessness more into the public view. But the socioeconomic decline of our society, I believe, is a collective responsibility. Just because so many of us are privileged to be able to take advantage of the benefits of our wealthy society does not mean everyone is so privileged, for whatever reasons. The extremely unfortunate need our assistance the most, not the least. To what compassionate and even practical end do we prosecute the powerless other than not wanting to be bothered with, no doubt, many citizens' disapproval? Perhaps if we soften our laws to accommodate reality, the impoverished will feel more a part of our ever-more-straining society. We need all the help we can get. I work in the school district and see the effects of our society's failure every day. Though I certainly criticize my own professional institution, I'm very proud that the public education system believes, at least believes, that all students deserve an education, no matter their economic situation. I hope the institution of our city's government, our elected representatives on the city council, feel responsible to do what they can to help all residents of our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Leslie Robinett is next, followed by Ted Drummond.
Okay. I'll just say it straight point to Mike. Basically, we all know that this camping ban is bogus.
I'm sorry, could you give your name?
Oh, it's Leslie Robinett, for the record. Basically, we all know that this camping ban is bogus, okay? You might as well be fight, be fight, we might as well be stuck back in when we fought the Civil War. Because you got cops trying to go out harass the homeless and basically not do their jobs on catching criminals instead of bugging the homeless that are represented here. Why can't they go out and do what they was done to protect the law? Okay? You know, because after, after May, well, back in March, I got arrested for being homeless. Okay? Being on the streets. And that is totally wrong, all right? Just because, oh, I couldn't because of my physical condition, get up literally and move that trailer myself, I got it. Okay? So you might, yeah, if you keep the camping ban on, you might as well just basically be deaf to what half is going on with the community here. I mean, it's okay to deal with all these levies and all the, all this stuff for the city, but what about the other part of the community that's homeless? Okay? Just like you guys said during the meeting today. Okay? So what's being done about it? That's what I want to know as a representative here today. That's all I got.
Thank you. Ted Drummond is next, followed by Jill Davidson.
My name's, my name is Ted Drummond, and I'm a resident of Eugene, and I go to First Christian Church. And as such, I've been a volunteer at the Egan Warming Center. It's been an eye-opener for me, to be honest with you. I've learned a lot. And one of the things I've learned is that as a society, we're not doing a good job of helping people who desperately need help, you know? And it's people who sometimes don't even know enough to ask for that help. And I feel that we need to do something, and I think we can. It's an interesting juxtaposition to see this discussion going on here at the same time. We know that the 2016 Olympic trials are coming to the city, and that, you know, they're going to raise over $8 million to put that on. We have the resources. We can do this. I know we do. As an example, at First Christian Church, we've been doing a Mission to Mexico thing where we go down and build houses down there. And we can do it down there because there are no building codes. You can put a very simple house up. We can do the thing in three and a half days. We built four of them with 130 people that come from all over the state of Oregon. If we had something like that here, I know we could have hundreds, thousands of people willing to put in a lot of time to make it happen. What we need is a place to make it happen. The land is the issue. That's what I see as the issue in Oregon. Interestingly enough, in Mexico, they have squatters rights laws that make it easier for a person that's been someplace for a few years to build a house. We'd have people with shotguns out patrolling their property in the United States if such a law was enacted. I know that. But anyway, I'd like to see the city come up with a place. I know that Dan Bryant's working on such a thing, and I'd like to see the Opportunity Village to be big. I'd like to see, you know, 300 or 400 people be able to be there. I know on the nights when Egan's running, that there are nights when just in, at FCC, we have over 100 people there. And I know there's six other sites open around the county at the same time. So anyway, what you can do, it's desperately needed, and I really hope you feel that and use the resources that our community has. We are out there. There's a lot of people, good-hearted people in this community, and I hope you can be the instrument to use that tool, truly. Thank you.
Thank you. Jill Davidson is next, followed by Gwendolyn Evans. Maybe I can't. That's Jill.
My name is Jill Davidson, and I'm a resident of Eugene, and I think I'm in Ward 1. To the Eugene City Council, as a city, we can spend time arguing why so many transient populations travel through our growing community. We'd have people with shotguns out patrolling their property in the United States if such a law was enacted, I know that. But anyway, I'd like to see the city come up with a place. I know that Dan Bryant's working on such a thing, and I'd like to see the Opportunity Village to be big. I'd like to see, you know, three or 400 people be able to be there. I know on the nights when Eagan's running, that there are nights when, just in, at FCC, we have over 100 people there, and I know there's six other sites open around the county at the same time. So anyway, what you can do, it's desperately needed, and I really hope you feel that and use the resources that our community has. We are out there. There's a lot of people, good-hearted people in this community, and I hope you can be the instrument to use that tool, truly. Thank you.
Thank you. Jill Davidson is next, followed by Gwendolyn. Inz, maybe I can't.
Hello. My name is Jill Davidson, and I'm a resident of Eugene, and I think I'm in Ward 1. To the Eugene City Council, as a city, we can spend time arguing why so many transient populations travel through our growing community and why there are people without shelter. We can get angry, shun, and judge those who, for one reason or another, do not conform to our view of just how a community member living in the Pacific Northwest should behave and how he or she should occupy time and space. But when it comes down to it, we choose to either build animosity or live peacefully. We can choose to put our hard-working law enforcement in the unnecessary and costly position of constantly harassing an already ostracized population, thus increasing the chance of retaliating actions against our police community. Or we can ask our police to keep communication and safety protocols in place by building an ongoing working relationship with the nomadic community, the homeless community, and protect our most fragile community members. These more fragile members depend on all of us for the safety monitoring and social service interventions every day. They are the very young children, the individuals with cognitive disabilities who cannot navigate our modern world without assistance, and our brothers and sisters suffering from mental and chemical imbalances who lack extended networks and financial resources. To create these working relationships, we must change the laws that require dehumanizing enforcement. We must change these laws into guidelines that enable police to protect, promote protection and safety. I say this as someone who lives within a two-block radius of a very busy neighborhood. It contains owners and renters of houses and apartments, families utilizing the first family place, and transient people sleeping behind my house. Almost all of us came from abroad and are seeking to simply live peacefully to enjoy the fruits of the land. I am here employing the council to act on our behalf. Please assist our social service organizations and the police in establishing a strong working relationship with homeless and transient populations. Provide a well-organized program with volunteer citizens, leading activists, and our public agencies to provide the services necessary for both nomadic and homeless brothers and sisters to participate and contribute to this community without the shame of having to relieve themselves in public, be arrested for needing to sleep, and be accused of destroying our sacred spaces for lack of any other space to exist. Allow people to sleep on the lands we can all agree are appropriate. Allow for well-thought-out mobile structures to shelter our people and provide these units with access to 24-hour sanitation. Teach those who lack the skills how to live respectfully alongside community. Provide safe community villages with portable shelters under town supervision, and provide leadership opportunities for all people.
Thank you. Michelle, this, I don't, there's a, it's like, it's, I'm hearing somebody talking all the time.
It's like the play.
I don't know what the.
She's getting a radio station, too, apparently, so.
Thank you. It was just a little distracting.
...use the microphones?
Pardon?
...you coach the audience and how to use the microphones?
They need to speak up.
Okay. You're not hearing them? Okay. All right. Gwendolyn, you need to get up close. They were more sensitive tonight, so I thought they were picking up better. This is the best they've been since I've been using them.
Let them know they can move the microphone.
Can move it closer to you if you need to, to be heard more. Watch out for the feedback. Okay, so, Gwendolyn, it looks like Gwendolyn Inz is next, followed by Ali Valkyrie.
Hi, my name.
Yes, there you go.
A little too loud.
That works. That works.
My name is Gwendolyn Iris. I live in the River Road area in Eugene.
Iris.
I came across an interesting piece of local history today that I'd like to share. In 1987, there was a week-long Grateful Dead show right here in Eugene that promised to bring an invasion of nomadic concert-goers. In response to this impending invasion, Mayor Brian Obi declared an emergency and temporarily lifted the camping ban in Alton Baker Park. The logic behind this decision was that if the concert-goers were not given a place to camp legally, that they would be sleeping in people's yards and public parks all over town. What is baffling to me, and from what I gather from conversations with many others, is why a week-long invasion of deadheads could be considered an emergency while the constant plight of the homeless is not. It is a similar flawed logic, I believe, that led to the decision to spend $70,000 on a fence around the old city hall to keep the homeless people from taking shelter there instead of spending $70,000 towards a legal shelter for the homeless. It is time to stop criminalizing existence. It is time for Eugene to start living up to its name as a human rights city. That's all.
Thank you. Ali Valkyrie is next, followed by Terrell Purvis. Terry.
I'm usually up here to tell you how I think you're screwing up. Tonight, I want to tell you about a time in history when you did the right thing. After World War II ended, returning veterans triggered a housing shortage. They were homeless with nowhere to go. In December of 1945, the Veterans of Foreign Wars approached the city with a proposal to temporarily place 100 trailers in the west half of Sladen Park. The city agreed without hesitation. Contract was signed one week later. Wilbur Highland was the most successful businessman in town. He owned the Eugene Plating Mill, and he owned the majority of land around Sladen Park. He strongly objected, and a month later, he filed an injunction in Circuit Court against the city in order to stop the project. He thought it would be unsightly. It would prevent his family from using the park. He thought that it violated the intent or the purpose of the park, and it wasn't a legal use of this space. This all sounds very familiar. The city argued in court that the housing shortage was an emergency. The housing was temporary, and that in the face of such a crisis, it was a proper and perfectly legal use of the park. After a week-long trial, this judge strongly sided with the city. Highland appealed to the State Supreme Court. They affirmed the lower decision. I have both of them for you right here. VFW successfully ran a housing project on the west side of Sladen Park for three and a half years, housing veterans and their families for $26 a month. Over 100 children were raised in the park, and the city supported the program until the very end. This story strikes me, not only for the obvious reasons, but because the city's role in the story. From a modern standpoint, it's really hard to believe that the city of Eugene fought the wealthiest man in town, all the way to the State Supreme Court, in order to secure the rights of homeless people to sleep in a park. In the face of a homeless emergency, the city of Eugene in 1945 was not afraid to demonstrate its integrity with the courage of its convictions, even in the face of public opposition. I'm not sure when the city lost that courage, but I suggest that when you tackle the camping issue, you keep your own history in mind. I'd like to leave you with an excerpt from this Circuit Court decision dated January 19th, 1945. "Many families are living in one house. A crowded condition in many residences now exists. This condition is not conducive to the public welfare. In fact, it is detrimental to the health, morals, and general well-being of our people. It must be borne in mind that the park was dedicated to the use of public forever, to all streets, avenues, park, and alleys. This is a public park, and housing annoys to the benefit of the public. In view of the housing emergency that now exists in the city of Eugene in vicinity, I am constrained to hold with an abiding conviction that there is not a court in the land that would hold otherwise, that the use of the park for the purpose of housing homeless soldiers is not a diversion or a violation. It is for the welfare and well-being of the public that all its citizens be properly housed." Judge George Skipworth, January 19th, 1945. Thank you.
Thank you. Terrell Purvis is next, followed by David Ivan Picioni. Thank you.
My name is Terrell Purvis. I reside at 433 West 8th down here, just a couple blocks down the road. I've come here under, like, many different hats and titles, you know, with Occupy, Sleeps. I've came here as a medic for the health part, and I guess today, I just want to come here as a citizen, you know, of Eugene and of Lane County. I've been living here since 1979, so I think I have a little history here. And so I wanted to tell you a story. In my capacity as a firefighter, I also work as a rescue worker for FEMA. And I go down and I work with hurricanes and tornadoes and a lot of natural disasters that do a lot of damage and displace people. Can't tell you how hard it is to go down the road in your truck with a truck full of food and seeing people on the side of the road begging, and you can't do anything about it. Can't tell you how hard it is to watch a mother trying to feed her children after a hurricane wiped her house out, and it was been her family house for the last 35 years, and now she can't afford to keep it, so now the banks are going to take her property. I can't tell you how hard it is to see a child. At one point in my life, I had an MRE, and I had to give him, I gave him a piece of the candy, the treat out of my MRE. I couldn't believe the joy out of this kid's eyes, and then I realized it's probably all he was going to get to eat all that day. The problem for me is that that same desperation I've seen in these people's eyes to the capacity of my work or my life, I see in the homeless here in this city. I'd like to consider them refugees, as you will, because when they're displaced out of their homes and the government steps in, we provide shelter. We provide housing. We provide food. We provide healthcare, because they don't have a home. We don't punish them. We don't give them tickets for sleeping under a tree. We don't give them tickets for sleeping in a park, because it's not their fault. Same game goes here. This is not their fault, and I'm hoping that this great city that I live in, that I love, will do something about this and no longer stand and talk. Two years, I've been in for you about the same issue. Two years. I have not stopped fighting. I'm hoping that you won't either.
David Ivan Picioni, followed by Michael Carrigan.
As you rightly said, I'm David Ivan Picioni. I live in Ward 7, and I think I agree with everybody that spoke today about the homeless, but I think the focus should be on the decision-makers, not them, at this point, because we've been talking about the homeless and talking about their rights long enough. Somebody asked me today if I would mind if somebody would sleep in my front yard. I said at first that I would, but then I thought about it, and I said, well, actually, if they pick up after themselves, pee in a corner, and go to excrete on newspaper than throw it in my garbage can, it wouldn't be that big of a problem. And if they would not be loud at night and would leave in the morning, that would be just fine. I think that, going back to what I was starting earlier about the spotlight, who it should be on, should be on you guys. For the conservatives that don't want to help others, that are only thinking about themselves, well, nothing can be said about that. But the so-called liberals, that, well, they're just simply bourgeois scum.
Michael Carrigan. Followed by Mark Hubble, or Nubble.
My name is Michael Carrigan, and I live in Ward 7, and tonight, I'm representing Community Alliance of Lane County, which has been working on the homeless issue for many, many years. I want to thank you for scheduling a work session on Wednesday to, you know, deal with the issue of the camping ban. I think it's an important meeting we're having, and applaud you for taking up the issue. Wednesday, I just urge you to come up with some common sense solutions to the problem. We don't have to, we're not asking for a repeal of the camping ban or to come up with the perfect solution, but we just need to roll up our sleeves and work together to kind of, because the time for action is now. The problem is real. At Cal, we're at 458 Blair. We have someone sleeping on our porch, or have had someone sleeping on our porch, every night for years. Most nights, there's no problem. The people, they sleep, and we let them sleep. There's a problem, there's a party, if someone's breaking the law, yes, the police are called. Our neighbors sometimes do that, but most nights, that's not the case. Most nights, people are just sleeping, and we let them sleep. We let them lie. And we urge the city to do the same thing. This is an issue, I mean, I'm proud of the city. We are a human rights city, and I think in the weeks and months ahead, we can, we can do some great things. The Conestoga Program is an example of that, where not only did people come up with this creative ideas, but you took action, you moved quickly, you made things happen. And so I urge on Wednesday, you do the same thing. Thank you so much.
Mark Nubble is next, followed by Tribal.
Lady Mayor, and it is Mark Hubble. So we are going to start tonight with frustration. We live in a country that our forefathers put together with a constitution that enabled us rights and freedoms, and these people owned slaves. It's an oxymoron to me, moron being the operative word. We still live in a country where this constitution does not support all the people. It's a shame, and if my father were here, he would call bullcrap on all this, and I instead will call bullcrap on all this. I do commend you for the work session that is going to be planned. I would hope that this is honest dialogue, and the outcome, we don't expect miracles, but an honest effort from every single one of you is expected. There are people out on the streets that are your brothers and sisters, whether you know them or not. They deserve humane treatment for their situation. If it were any one of you, you would ask the same thing, and we would gladly make the effort to make that happen. I was distressed to find out that our policies here in Eugene regarding the houseless and the criminalization of what that affects people doing what anybody would do. Distresses me greatly. I do want to let you know that I do support you. I am actively out there helping the houseless to the best of my ability, and I would like to see Eugene do that also. Take an example from Portland, Right to Dream 2. They have an organization that helps the houseless, and it doesn't cost anything.
Tribal is next, followed by Mary Sharon Moore.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing my voice, my actions are referred to as Tribal. And I'm here to discuss one of the many problems that has been going on in this entire country, and particularly major cities in this country, is involving the use of involuntary functions, which happen to be eating, sleeping, using, a bathroom. In this particular case, sleeping. Unfortunately, sleeping has become a criminal act, if expressed by some individuals, which places me in a position, since being born in 1973, in violation of such. I've been sleeping every night of my life. Now, as far as human rights is what I wish to discuss, our human rights are being violated as human beings. I don't like to use labels and titles, so I don't even call people homeless. I just call them individuals that are living without homes. And unfortunately, those of us that are homeless, technically, whatever you define as homeless, the majority of them only are homeless because they're still paying rent, lease, mortgage, what have you. Miss a payment, you'll find out how fast you'll be in the streets. Article 25 of the UN Declaration of Human Rights, "Everyone has a right to a standard of living adequate for the health and well-being of himself and of his family, including food, clothing, housing, and medical care, and necessary social services, and the right to security in the event of unemployment, sickness, disability, widowhood, old age, or other lack of livelihood in circumstances beyond his control." Beyond his control is what I wish to discuss in relation to what you call homeless people, and the problem you have with what you refer to as your homeless population. When you separate yourself and your community from other individuals that happen to be indigent, you place yourself in moral incorrectness, which is what I like to live by, moral correctness. I mean, law is... I mean, law is nice. It's cruel, it's favorable to some if they have enough money, except for Bernie, he didn't make off very well. But as far as those that are indigent in life, we're stuck with the position of survival skills, to the point that we have to be concerned with if we're going to be attacked by members of the community or police organizations of various cities. And a lot of people are, like, for example, there's an individual that died yesterday sleeping in the streets, was not able to make his way to his breakfast this morning. Jones versus City of Los Angeles stipulates that any person that basically is sleeping after 6:00 AM or before 9:00 PM is in violation of laws of whatever Los Angeles has available. And I see something similar in pattern happening here, as being a person that is recently located.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Sharon Moore is next, followed by Joella Ewing.
Good evening, Mayor Piercy, Councilmembers and City Manager Reese. I'm Mary Sharon Moore, I reside in Ward Two. I am here this evening to express my continued concern over the city's sleeping ban, and I present three specific requests. First, I ask that the city modify its sleeping ban and curfew laws to allow individuals and families with no other place to sleep, to be able to sleep on public land from 9:00 PM to 7:00 AM without being awakened. I ask that the city unlock the park bathrooms and provide toilets and garbage collection to known sites where large numbers of the unhoused sleep. Third, I ask that the city allow the people currently camping on BLM property behind Fred Meyer in sensitive wetland areas to move to adjacent, dry, non-sensitive land belonging to the city, and provide them with toilets and garbage collection. Poverty and homeless is not the problem. It's a persistent attitude around wealth and deservingness that is the problem. It's an attitude that they are not us. The citizens of Eugene deserve moral leadership as well as fiscal responsibility from our elected and appointed leaders. I ask that you recognize the urgency of justice with regard to those who lack the financial means to provide for the most basic of human needs, safe, legal, emergency shelter for themselves and for their loved ones. For the unhoused with physical and mental health concerns, the urgency of justice is even greater. Thank you.
Joella Ewing is next, followed by Ann Kelvin.
My name is Joella Ewing, and I live at 2384 Washington Street. I'm a member of Sleeps, and I volunteer for the Eugene Service Station, Egan Warming Center, First Place Family Shelter. So a lot of these people that are being displaced at night are some of my friends. Waking people in the middle of the night is harassment, it's cruel. Cities such as Washington DC and Vancouver BC allow people to sleep in particular parks, on the benches, et cetera, in certain downtown areas, without harassment. Opportunity Village is going to be a wonderful asset for the city, and I thank you very much for supporting that. But that's not going to be enough. That's going to house just a few people. There will still be hundreds of people out there who need a place to sleep at night without harassment. And so I'm asking you to please change the law, do whatever is necessary to make it possible for people to sleep all night long. Thank you.
Ann Kelvin is next, followed by Robin Bloomgarden.
Hi, I'm Ann Kelvin. I live here in Eugene in George Brown's Ward. I'm with Opportunity Village Eugene, and usually I'm pretty narrowly focused on the village, doing the work needed for opening. However, I'm well aware that this initial pilot project is only open to about 30 houseless people, and is only one small step. Other steps need to be taken. So I'm here to support initiatives to take another look at the camping ordinance and other policies resulting in the harassment and in the criminalization of acts of living by unhoused people. Mayor Piercy once spoke about wanting new and innovative solutions concerning unhoused people. New ideas, new approaches, usually clash with established policies. The very search for the innovative requires the ability to challenge policies and procedures currently in force. What the council does now sets the stage for the conditions unhoused people will face next winter. So now, it seems to me, is a good time to take a serious look at the camping ban and other policies, and make adjustments that can be tried and modified as necessary. If not the changes asked for tonight, then what do you suggest to ameliorate the conditions of the unhoused now and next winter? Thank you.
Robin Bloomgarden is next, followed by Emily Semple.
My name is Robin Bloomgarden, and I hope you bear with me, I forgot my glasses. I'm currently staying in Ward One. On February 24th, 1920, Eugene City Council voted to refer a bond measure concerning city parks to the voters by special election. The bond proposed directed $10,000 of public funds for the purpose of improving the city parks, including the improvement of the free campgrounds in city parks. The citizens approved the bonds on May 21st, 1920, and the council passed the ordinance 2446, authorizing the bonds. The city park improvement bonds were used to improve the north face of Skinnerview, where the municipal auto camp was expanded and improved. The auto camp at the current site of Lamb's Cottage had room for 200 campers and operated year-round under a license from the state of Oregon. Lamb's Cottage was originally built with public money as a shelter and water source for the auto camp. The auto camp even had its own dedicated grocery on a dirt road near the river that is now Cheshire Street. City Council agreed to choose, to close the auto camp around 1930 at the request of the city's playground committee, who wished to designate that space as a place for children to play. The playground was never built. If the cottage was built with the intent for people to camp there, why can't people legally camp there? At the very least, the city should allow Lamb Cottage to be used as showers, bathrooms, and water for those who are camping down there. That's what it was built for. That was the will of the voters and the council in 1920. Thank you.
Emily Semple is next, followed by Jennifer Lanell Adams.
My name is Emily Semple, I live in George Brown's Ward. Mayor, councilors, this is very simple. People need to sleep. It's required. You can't live without it. Do you sleep? Where do you sleep? Do you have a house? Do you sleep in a bed? Does it have a mattress? A box spring? Is it off the floor? Do you sleep in a futon, a recliner, a cot? A piece of Enslite? Cardboard? On the wet pavement? Are you warm when you sleep? Do you have jammies and wool socks? A blanket? A down comforter? Heat? Is it warm enough to sleep naked? If you have to pee, how far do you have to go in the night? Through a door? Down the hall? Downstairs? Outside? Down the block? A mile away? Anyplace you can find? Are you safe? Do you feel safe while you sleep? Maybe you have insomnia, but do you lie there worrying that you might be robbed, raped, killed, listening to fights? When do you sleep? Do you have a regular sleep time? Can you sleep all night? Do you get woken up? Do you have to pack everything up and move to nowhere, who knows where? Sleep deficiency is a real problem. The US Department of Health and Human Services says that in addition to physical problems from sleep deficiency, which include lack of healing, changes to the immune system, higher blood pressure, heart disease, kidney disease, stroke, obesity, diabetes, unhappiness. I quote, "Sleep deficiency alters activity in some parts of the brain. If you are sleep deficient, you may have trouble making decisions, remembering things, solving problems, controlling emotions and behavior, coping with change. It's also linked with depression, suicide risk, taking behavior risks, and it exacerbates mental illness. Please uphold the Declaration of Independence, which gives us the unalienable right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. We cannot live without sleep. If you've ever pulled an all-nighter, you know how hard it is to cope the next day and stay out of trouble. Keep your liberty. Let us pursue happiness. Let us sleep." Do you sleep? Thank you.
Perfect. Jennifer Lanell Adams is next, and then Jason Plato Wellman is after that.
For the record, I'm Jennifer Adams. I am actually one of those homeless people. I don't live in a ward. The main problem is not just sleep.
Talk up closer to the mic.
We see people every day trying to make money for their food. Every person that has a house, a job, whatever they can afford, they have the freedoms to do what they want, what they please, set their stuff down wherever they want to. But those of us who don't have that freedom, who don't have a house, a shower to go home to, a loving husband or a wife, a family, a warm plate of food, we aren't allowed to put our stuff next to a bench, next to somebody else. We have to sit here as a small community of our own selves and govern ourselves instead of being helped. What we want is police to actually, instead of trying to hurt us, help us more by offering a job. We're tired of spanging. We're tired of not having a way to support ourselves. I can guarantee you, SSI for $710 a month does not get nothing. I am one of those people. I am one of those disabled. I can guarantee you, for every one of you, there are probably 500 homeless people in this city, for every single one of you. Everybody. It doesn't matter, this city, down in San Francisco, down on the other end of the coast, everywhere in this country, our homeless population is getting more and more pushed under the rug. We are not being addressed in the way we should be. We are not being looked at as human beings. We're being looked at as dog poo. The stuff you walk on. The floor we sleep on is in a way, your grounds for kicking us to the curb. We all have talents. Help us out by allowing us to sleep, be able to find a place close by that we can go to the bathroom, and not just have the bathrooms open, but have them serviced to where you have toilet paper every night, and not just for during the week. I've noticed this as a problem. I see it in all the public bathrooms. When the weekend comes, if there's not enough toilet paper, nobody goes and fills it. What do you all, every time you all go home, what do you wipe yourself with? You have plenty of toilet paper to do what you need to. You have a warm shower to clean yourself up. Keep wounds cleaned. Keep all your health in gear. I've been sick since last August.
Jason Plato Wellman, followed by Wayne Martin.
Hello, good people. Can you guess who I'm going to talk about? Anyways, so my name is Jason Plato Wellman. I live in a Cal Young neighborhood, and recently I was working with these youth on this event. And it's a human rights event, and we're trying to get youth inspired to partake in local issues, local politics. And we're talking about all the facets of human rights. And we brought in human rights councilors, yada, 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 et cetera. We also discussed how Eugene is a human rights city. I showed them the Eugene City of, uh, Human Rights City website, and it's a really fancy website, it's really nice. And on that website, it talks about how Eugene as a city seeks to uphold the Universal Declaration of Human Rights in its entirety, and I thank you for that. That's awesome. I think that's really cool and inspiring. So going through these workshops with this youth, in the time of, in the period that we were going through these workshops, an incident happened under the Ferry Street Bridge, where a group of youth were harassed and ticketed, I don't know why you ticket people that have no money, but ticketed, and arrested for sleeping under the bridge. And it hit me quite in the heart, because I'm working with a group of pretty privileged youth. And we're talking about human rights in a warm shelter, eating pizza. And then I think about these other youths, same age as the youth I'm working about sleeping outside, and they're experiencing a real human rights issue. And I found it bothersome, it kept bothering me, it still bothers me, that's why I'm here right now. You know, if we're going to be a human rights city, and we're going to have a fancy celebration each year where we pat ourselves on the back, I think it's important that we make sure that our actions back up our words. And that incident shows a systemic flaw in how we relate to the homeless, how we treat the homeless. As opposed to actually upholding human rights, it was a violation of Article 25 of the human rights, which is quite bothersome. Now, on your website, you say that you don't have the money to put everybody in the house. And essentially, Article 25 does say that everybody is entitled to housing of some sort. I can understand the argument that you don't have the money to put everybody in the house, although I would encourage you to think broader, think outside of the box, think about cost-effective solutions. Opportunity Village, the Conestoga Huts are two examples of that. More programs like that would be good. Another thing you could do would be to modify the 4.815 sleeping ban and curfew laws to allow people with no place to sleep to sleep on public land from 9:00 PM to 7:00 AM. Another thing you could do is unlock the park bathrooms. And I have more I want to say, I'm running out of time, but I do want to say, I was homeless for a period of time as a young man, and I had to sleep in my car. I was lucky I had a car, but it was terrifying, it sucked, and I got harassed numerous times for sleeping in my car, where police would have me drive to other locations where I would try to sleep.
Thank you.
Slow down my process of getting into a house.
Wayne Martin is next, followed by Jennifer Frenzer.
Good evening, Ann, thank you for the opportunity. I'm Reverend Wayne Martin, and I've appeared here before, and I'm delighted for the opportunity to do so again. I'm also mindful of the number of words that you've already endured tonight on the importance of the care, of public care for those with no homes. I'm reflecting and even anticipating in prayer the May 10th event, which we're all looking forward to, and for which you've been gracious enough to seek to host. His reverence, the Dalai Lama will be welcomed by the city of Eugene. On that day, there will be a great opportunity for us, in our own way, to experience hopefulness, and for that possibly to become manifesting in certain actualized steps and ways. Who wants to have hopeless, hopefulness without an opportunity to express ourselves in something concrete? I'm excited about the message that the Dalai Lama will bring. We've been given enough to read, we've been given a sense of the foretaste of that message. I'm also eager to be among the members of clergy and religious people who will reflect on his words and feel a unity. I'm eager to see the community of those who have no home and those who gather around them in support and care of them. That can be a moment of hopefulness as well. I'm eager to see the responsiveness of the legislators and the city council members here, Springfield, and other nearby communities, to the message that he brings of moral action and justice and mercy. I think it's an exciting vision. I'm already seeing it. And it could give us a reason to reflect on some of our statutes. So I close with this. There is a verse in the Hebrew scriptures, the Jewish scriptures, in their Psalms, which says rather candidly, "Woe be unto those who legitimize hardship by statute." May the appearance of the Dalai Lama and those gathered here for that, including those with no homes and including those who sit in positions of legislature, may they review what that might mean to legislate and legitimize hardship by statute. Thank you.
Jennifer Frenzer is next, followed by Scott Perry.
Jennifer Frenzer, and I'm in Betty Taylor's ward. I would love to echo a few of the sentiments I've heard tonight. I, particularly the information I heard about the, um, the police search of the young girl. I have a soon-to-be 13-year-old daughter, I'd like to know that there's a much better policy in place should she ever find herself in that situation. Please take action on that. We have had an, you know, the economic disaster the country's experienced is like a slow-moving monster, and it's shoved ahead of it, you know, groups of people who have been put in the position of having to sleep on the streets. The public response to Oregon, to the Occupy Medical Unit that meets Sunday in the parks, has been that of relief. People are touched by the fact that there's some humanity, that these folks are being treated humanely. Similarly, I feel that the citizens are taxed greatly emotionally, spiritually, when they find that the homeless are not treated humanely. Being woken up in the middle of the night is not humane. As you all know, recently eight people were awakened from a dead sleep under the Seventh Street Bridge, falsely charged with criminal trespass, and hauled off to jail for the night. Later realizing the area was not posted as a no trespassing area, the officers changed their charge from criminal trespass to camping, a charge which requires that 24-hour written notice be given before citation, and which does not allow arrest. But the change was made only after they were caught spraying no trespassing signs on the bridge in an attempt to cover up their police error. Because there is no public support for people waking up, the police, I'm sorry, for police waking people up and charging these folks, there's been sort of a strategy of using criminal trespass charges, and in order to camouflage their continued program to disturb the sleeping. This is an attempt to hide activities, I don't, we feel, from the council. This time, they got caught. Our police chief's response in letter to the council and mayor was to ignore giving an explanation of the officer's behavior, but rather to defend the overall action. We've received complaints, quote, this is a quotation, "We've received complaints about the camp from a number of different people describing offensive behavior and harassment by individuals associated with it." The FBI and U.S. Marshes.
Thank you. Scott Perry is next, followed by Jean Stacey.
Good evening, my name is Scotty Perry. I live at 715 West 23rd. I've been a music teacher going on a quarter century this summer, actually, and I just wanted to expound more upon this disturbing incident with the eight young folks that were harassed. They were, these eight people who were awakened and jailed, they were not asked if they were the people who had been offensive or harassing, and they weren't asked if that was their trash. They were simply arrested and removed on false charges, we remind you. And do you not find it alarming that our police chief actually thinks that he righteously justified, as per his official response to you, the council? This middle-of-the-night raid and arrest of eight sleeping people because someone unidentified at some other day in time had offended and harassed passersby supposedly? So did he send officers down to interview the complainants and get descriptions of the harassers? Did he send officers down during the time of day the offenses occurred to talk to people who were there at this time of day? Uh-uh, no. He instead defends the middle-of-the-night secretive sweep, fails to explain why his officers were either so devious or so poorly trained that they violated city law and police policy, and then tried to cover it up with the spray painting and violated the laws again. We need to face up to the fact that the police chief truly believes that the council wants the homeless chased away. We need to face up to the fact that he and his officers believe ignoring basic human rights, violating police policy, violating Eugene laws, and violating the Constitution are totally acceptable in the effort to carry out the council's wishes to have the homeless removed. We insist that the council correct the impression that this is acceptable, that the council change the laws that violate the Constitution, and that they instruct the police their duty is to protect all who are in Eugene, and to strictly stay within the law and within official police policy. Thank you very much.
Jean Stacey is next, followed by John Monroe.
I'm Jean Stacey, and I live in varying wards. I'm a child of the South. I grew up in kind of a white bubble, debutante, country club, junior league, and when I went away to college, I was absolutely shocked to find out that there were people who didn't think that was okay. I think those of you who are on the council now are also living in a bit of a bubble, some of you, surrounded more by the people who support your campaigns and whose downtown you try to protect. And you, I have to ask myself, why don't those people whom you tell me when I meet with you privately would be appalled if you voted to restrict the camping ban? Why don't they come out here and speak to you in public? I would suggest to you, it might be because they know in their heart of hearts that this is prejudice and bigotry speaking to you. I look back now at all the local governments in the 60s. None of them helped African-Americans who were going through the civil rights. Every city council. I had a relative married to Governor George Wallace, so I know of what I speak. How ashamed are you going to be in 10 years when history looks back at you from the perspective of the larger population? Think how the city councilors must feel who sat on those 60s city councils and voted to keep black children out of bathrooms, out of schools, away from water fountains. Think about the sunset laws of which we are so ashamed in Oregon. Our curfews and our sleeping laws are Jim Crow against the homeless. They are no different than the sundown laws of which we have rid ourselves. This is your time for each of you personally to be comfortable, knowing you did the right thing, that you didn't listen to greedy people who do not want to have their downtown besmirched by the ugliness of poverty. You must stand out for people's human rights. I know enough of you to know what you believe. A place for everybody to be, a place for everybody to pee. You believe it. You believe it. You can make it happen, and only you.
John Monroe is next, followed by Hayden Manis Brew.
Hello, my name is John Monroe. I live in the Whittaker. One of the themes that's come up tonight has been the amnesia of our history, the forgetting that once upon a time, this government had a spine and protected the homeless, rather than kowtowing immediately to whatever commercial interest came and commanded you to obey. On top of that, we've forgotten all of the negatives of Eugene. You can find photos from 1926 of those three infamous K's lodged behind, or below, excuse me, the White Cross on Skinner's Butte. In 1924, a lecturer for the Ku Klux Klan came to Eugene, and many of the males of the population quickly joined, so much so that an office of the KKK was opened in Eugene. If you think that that dissolved away in 1978, this council passed an ordinance of civil rights protecting, among other groups of people, homosexuals, a concerned citizens group got together and mobilized the population, and the people of Eugene, by majority, voted to rescind in 1978, 35 years ago, a protection of homosexuals. This was after, by the way, the invasion of the Grateful Dead, so this whole hippie whitewash of the racist bigotry that runs rampant to this day in Eugene should show that exactly for what it is. Right now, throughout the United States, we're seeing a massive militarization of the police, and the kind of racist, bigoted attitudes that are being promulgated here are always the basis for the fascism that links with police elitism. The kind of elitism that was just evinced by Councilor Pauling. In point of fact, an attack on any member of the community is an attack on the entire community, and singling out one unfortunate police officer as opposed to the dozens of homeless that die every single year is the kind of police militarized elitism that comes with fascism every single time. And the kind of spineless governmental sip by the side that watches as the poorest of the population, which in every single instance of militarized fascism included the homeless, every single instance, whether that was in right-wing Germany or left-wing Russia, in China, in Chile, the homeless are always attacked regardless of political ideology, and it is always organized by police, by governmental technocrats, and ignored by the people that live in their bubbles that are protected and do not want to risk themselves. And I will admit, it is dangerous to stand up for the most abused people. It is dangerous to put your name out there. It is dangerous to have your address listed in police logs. It is also necessary, and unless people mobilize to resist this widely disseminated hatred that is organized for political ends, for the wealthy, for the police, and for all those that want to control, we're gonna have a lot worse than some of you feeling bad in a few years. We're gonna have every pretext for freedom dissolved.
Okay, Hayden Manis Brew is next, followed by Helen Legori.
My name is Hayden Manis Brew. I've lived in this community for-
We're talking to the mic, Hayden.
Lived in this community for well over 30 years.
Lift it up.
That's as high as it goes. I'm not setting, sorry, I don't think you're this-
If you're gonna stand, hold it with your hand so we can hear you.
So I lived in this town for over 30 years, raised three children. My grandson was born today, birthday, very happy about that. But I wanna, I wanna ask the people in this community if they realize how draconian the practices have been in this town. So let me ask you. In the mid-1400s, Queen Elizabeth decided with the cohorts of her friends to do some social cleansing, and the leopards were removed from Spain. Feeling the success for that, they decided to go back out, and this time they wanted to do some social cleansing and remove all the pagans and the Christians that didn't comply with the state's idea of religion. Then they turned around and decided, well, we've got some momentum, let's go after the Moors. So they turned around and decided social cleansing was gonna be the, was the answer to the problem. It's clear the Moors out of Spain. Not enough, because now they decided the Jews had to go. So they went after the Jews, and social cleansing was, and to free Spain of all the Jews. The importance of this, let's leap forward a little over 500 years. 2012, Eugene, Oregon. Gaines, what? That's right, we're Tract Town. The Olympic Tract Trials. That's right. EPD went throughout this entire town, to every park and open space, and removed forcefully, either by tickets or by threats, every unhoused person in this community. They did it intentionally. Now, I don't know who the fuck in here decided, if they were Queen Elizabeth or Queen Isabella-
Excuse me.
Please don't censor me.
Hayden.
Please don't censor me.
Don't swear, please do.
Don't swear, please.
To who is it that appointed themselves Queen Isabella? Who is it that appointed themselves King Ferdinand? Because one of you guys did that. I don't know if it's the police chief, I don't know if it's the city manager, or who it is. But your social cleansing wasn't gone unrecognized, we all saw that. I mean, you could turn your head and ignore it and say you didn't see it. I witnessed it. I watched people being arrested for crimes that they were not supposed to be arrested for, 'cause they're not arrestable crimes. Don't you get this? You are violating the law. You want to claim the right of a human rights society, a whole human rights town? Based on what? Not on what I seen in 2012. What the hell you gonna show me in 2013? My name is Hayden Manis Brew. I love you all, but you gotta get your shit together.
No, there is a certain, we're trying to have freedom of- Excuse me.
Ask anybody that knows me, nobody say it.
We work really hard to give everybody their three minutes, let everybody speak their piece, but we do demand a little bit of respect in the room. Helen Legori, followed by Sabra Markroft.
Helen Legori of Eugene, in War II. In the summer of 1987, the University of Oregon asked the city council to waive the no camping ordinance for the Grateful Dead concert at Otzen Stadium. Anywhere from 1,000 to 3,000 people would need a place to sleep. Rather than deadheads spreading out into the surrounding neighborhoods or Alton Baker Park, it was proposed that camping be allowed in Otzen's East Parking Lot. A counselor at that time remarked that waiving the camping ban, in this case, would be a preventative move. The university offered to provide water, toilets, wastewater collection, and garbage disposal. With a written agreement from the university, then mayor, Ovi, Brian Ovi, agreed to waive the no camping ordinance. Now, this was an instance in which a Eugene city council took a common sense and preventative approach. People were going to camp because they had to, there was no other place for them to sleep. The city approved a designated camping area with toilets, water, and garbage receptacles assured. Citywide problem averted. Today's council is not taking such a preventative and common sense approach. It's acting as if, by locking our public bathrooms, the unhoused will simply go away to another planet, perhaps. No, they're still here, and to everyone's disgust, they're peeing and pooping out of doors. doors, often next to those locked bathrooms, creating a sanitation hazard. Families bringing children to a park are at risk of stepping in human feces, of playing in puddles contaminated with hepatitis C. City employees and unhoused people serving on work crews sent to clean up deserted camps are exposed to hepatitis C and other nasty... Oh, this is a hard word for me. Contagents in human waste. This night... Thank you.
Sabra Markroft is next, followed by Brooke Robichaud.
Hello, my name is Sabra Markroft. I reside in Ward 7. It's Earth Day. Fully accept the fact that the only home you will ever truly own is your own body, and that only for a brief while. So learn to be as resilient as you can be for your own survival and so that you can be available to help others in times of crisis. Be compassionate to those who have less, for you may soon join them, and you will need strong friends. We offer you peace. We offer you love. We offer you friendship. We see your beauty. We hear your need. We feel your feelings. Let us all work together to make these words true. Use your powers for good. Think of the consequences if you do nothing. Happy Earth Day. One year past the supposed apocalypse.
Brooke Robichaud is next, followed by Reagan Clark.
Hi, I'm Dr. Brooke Robichaud, and I am in Claire Saretz Ward. I first want to say that I recognize that the issues being brought forward today, tonight, are not easy, and I really am praying for everybody that you can find a solution that is in the gray area that satisfies everybody. But that's not here, what I'm here to talk about, I'm here to give you a quick update on Occupy Medical. I am the statistician, and I work in the pharmacy with the clinic. You may have, you probably all saw the weekly, week and a half ago, about the clinic. I just want to give you a quick update, since I am the statistician. In November, the clinic was seeing 15 people every Sunday. February to March, our numbers were averaging between 20 and 30. During the end of March, the beginning of April, we were averaging over 30 people per week being served in our free clinic. Yesterday, we saw 49 people at the clinic, and we know that these numbers are only rising. We've spent the last 24 hours talking amongst ourselves, and we're worried about how we're going to continue to fill the need. I want to thank you on behalf of Occupy Medical for your support. We have the support of most people in the room. We have the support of the city, and we are utterly grateful for your support. But I'm actually here to ask you to do one thing for us. We need doctors. We need medical doctors, not PhDs like me. And so I'm actually here to ask every one of the city councillors, and yes, Mayor Piercy, to ask your personal doctor to come and volunteer at Occupy Medical. We only ask two hours a month on Sundays, and I can tell you that my doctor actually is our MD coordinator, Lee St. Louis. So I've already asked my doctor. I didn't have to. I'm also asking everybody in the room to do the same thing, because we can't continue to meet the needs. All of you know that much of the population that we are serving is the population that's being addressed here with the camping ban, and because of what's going on, because people can't sleep there, medical needs are really complex, and we're actually able to do that. We're actually able to serve people with incredibly complex needs, but we can't continue with the growth at the rate it is. So we just need help. I'm not here to ask you for money. I'm here to ask you to ask your friends who are in the medical profession to come and help Occupy Medical. I think you know how to contact us, and really thank you, City of Eugene, and Mayor Piercy and Claire, since you are my city councillor. Thank you for your support. We are utterly grateful, but we just need bodies so we can continue to serve this population.
Reagan Clark is next, followed by Joe Tindall.
Good evening. Reagan Clark, Ward 7. I'm a formerly homeless veteran and activist concerned with the state of our country's-
Talk right into the mic, because you're losing your voice here.
Thank you. Concerned with our country's economic strength, a major causative factor in the homelessness crisis is not just a factor here but nationwide, as everybody here knows. This and other factors have led me to think that Housing First is a good, but not enough model, especially considering the current budget crunch, an issue the entire nation is aware of, and if we do not fix our nation's financial dilemma, there will not be any funding to do any social programs. What is needed is a huge groundswell of local business opportunity to stem the tide of homelessness, and the best place to start is in the local food security. Currently, homeless veterans are a disproportionately affected group that is receiving a tremendous amount of attention, both locally and nationally, especially in helping them get a start in sustainable agriculture. Currently, 300,000 of them are homeless on any given night. Currently, Oregon produces 4% of its food locally. This needs to change as well. This and every other community needs to reach out to these veterans, as these veterans, if given the tools, can go from homeless to farmers and bring in a tremendous amount of grant funding, and can be an economic engine to radically improve our local economy, meet our food security needs, and create local economic prosperity for those who need it most. So what can this body do to help make this happen? Well, let's do what Eugene did in the past with homeless vets after World War II, and create a support structure so they and others can climb the ladder of social achievement. Thank you.
Joe Tindall is next, and the last one up will be Heather Merrick.
Good evening, Joe Tindall. It's been a long night. Okay, let's start this mid-argument. But they broke the law. Yes, I have already agreed that an ordinance was violated. So you don't want us to enforce the law? No, I'm not saying that. But they broke the law. The problem is that we force these violations by our policies. If we close every bathroom, the homeless will poop on the ground, at which point we can go nuts. As soon as they sleep, they are in violation of the camping ban. The same thing if they sit down with a large backpack. Officer Clinco at the Downtown Public Safety Zone Committee corrected one of the members' comments by pointing out that most mentally ill persons, most alcohol and drug users, and most criminals live in houses. For drugs, if the police search the homeless, they will often find marijuana. It's an easy bust. But most marijuana users have their stash at home. Yes, pot is against the law. But if it is so bad that the police need to eradicate it, why not a campaign of search warrants to get the stash of those living in the houses? The homeless are an easy target, same crime, different treatment. The solution is to set aside a piece of land and say, "Go over there, and we will leave you alone." But as a start, when will this council create a homeless committee to work on these issues? It has been more than a year since the task force made this low-cost recommendation. Finally, on Saturday, Alien Boy, a documentary about a mentally ill man killed by Portland police, played with the Bee Gees. It is worth seeing. The filmmakers are willing to arrange a showing for the city, for the council, and for the police if we are interested. Thank you.
Last up is Heather Merrick.
My name is Heather Merrick, and I live in George Brown Ward.
Talk right into the mic, Heather. We can't hear you.
Okay. I notice when we talk about issues of safety and health and sanitation that the focus isn't usually on the safety and health and sanitation of the homeless, even though they're the most vulnerable and exposed. Also, I notice that when we talk about the camping laws, that just in calling it a camping law, it kind of neutralizes what is really the criminalization of sleep. And even though we're told that the laws are applied equally to everybody who violates them, we all know that people who have houses can afford to be law-abiding or have some kind of secrecy in what they do, but the Eugene homeless have no options. I also notice that when we talk about the homeless, it's kind of like they're objects, but really, we're talking about residents of the community and members of the community, and they own the commons, and they're entitled to access, and the police are their servants, and you're also their servants. And I can't think of a more pressing community issue and one more worthy of the use of our public resources than homelessness. So I'll just end saying that while homelessness is a problem, and we all should be accountable, it's not a crime. And also, I heard in testimony earlier, they talk about the consequences of sleep deficiency, and I would just add that sleep deprivation is also a form of torture. So I think it's been said well that we need to lift the ban on sleep, and I support those statements.
I'm going to close the public hearing. I guess my only comment is some people's comments were done well, and some were not. Councilor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's see if this works. Okay, here we go. I guess I would start by saying that one of the strongest people in the room at the moment, in my opinion, is this young lady back here, and I hope you'll forgive me that I can't remember your first name, but with the pigtails right here. Thank you very much. Yeah. And the reason I say that is because she's come and spoken many times, and every time she does, I find that she's thought through what she's going to say, there's wisdom in it, and you can sense that she's kind, and you can sense that she feels what she says very genuinely, and that there's a gentleness of spirit in how she presents it. And I find myself always wanting to listen when she does that. One of the hardest parts of this job for me is that I want very much to hear the truth that's present and said by people with whom I disagree. And it's really, really hard when someone's frustration boils over, and they let their anger and their frustration create a righteous indignation that becomes insulting and frankly mean. It's hard to hear the truth of what people say when they do that. I appreciate the frustration. I'm pretty frustrated about some things myself sometimes. But I hope that for those that want us to hear them, I offer you an example. I hear every word she says. Thanks.
Counselor Saret.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Clark. I really appreciate those comments. Since we're going to have a work session on this on Wednesday, I'll save my remarks for that, so I just want to ask the city manager the one specific question, if we have any estimate of when the investigation into the arrests under the Ferry Street Bridge might be completed, or how that progress is being made.
I don't, but we can get back to you.
Yeah, I think that, you know, one of the things we said from this dais was that we would keep people up to date and have as transparent a process as we can, given that it's an investigation. So I think it's important that we try to keep people updated as that proceeds.
Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, everybody, for coming down. I want to thank Gwendolyn, and Robin, and Ally for the very interesting vignettes of Eugene's old history. It seemed like, I had no idea that the citizens did those things for disadvantaged people in the past, and kind of inspiring, and hopefully we'll be able to do something like that, too. It's, you know, it's kind of ironic, at our work session earlier today, we were discussing possible modifications to our multiple-unit property tax exemption program for developers who want to build housing downtown, in the downtown area, and whether we should require a 20% affordability requirement for them in the future to get the exemption. It's kind of funny. So we've got, you know, we're going to build housing for, it's not cheap, by the way, and meanwhile, there's all these homeless people. I just kind of think the irony in the same evening is kind of interesting. I have no idea how the work session on Wednesday will go. I'm just hopeful that we can do something useful and sensible that will make a difference. That's my hope. I don't know what's going to happen, but I think that's what we're going to shoot for, though. Thank you.
Counselor Evans.
Thank you, Mayor, and I want to thank everybody else for coming out tonight and speaking. I would urge our council to look very hard, based on what we come up with at the work session on Wednesday, and consider some trial solutions that we can have for a certain set amount of time, see how they work, see what we can do to look at modifying our policy in a way that works better for the people who are out here on the streets. That's the position that I'm taking right now, and I've taken in the past. I'm hoping that we, together, can work through some of the critical issues that are posed, the dilemmas that are posed by the camping ban, public safety issues, also balance with the public health issues that we are seriously concerned about. I think if nobody else is concerned about the public health issues, everybody should be concerned about them. And I've said this to people who have had an entrenched view of, you know, not modifying the camping ban, that the price will be a whole lot higher if we don't do something to address the issue in a creative and sensible fashion. So I'm looking forward to the work session, and I'm hoping that we all think, not just with our minds, but also with our hearts, about the people who, in this community, may or may not have an address to be able to vote.
All right. Thank you, everyone, and I, yeah, it sounds like to me that people are ready to go to work on this on Wednesday, so thank you for coming. We'll move on now to the consent calendar. Council President.
I move to approve the items on the consent calendar.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Okay, thank you. It passes. All right, next item up.
Sir, you may want to get the room to-
Please, sir, you need to go sit down. Thank you. All right, we have an action item on funding allocations for the federal community development block grant and home investment partnerships programs. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Each spring, the city council approves funding allocations for use of community development block grant and home investment partnerships program funds for the next fiscal year. The proposed uses of funds are described and submitted to HUD each year in a document called the One Year Action Plan. The action plan must be submitted to HUD by May 15. The action plan must be submitted to HUD by May 15th. The proposed uses of funding must align with the local community needs and strategic plan described in the Eugene-Springfield 2010 Consolidated Plan.
Council President?
I move to approve the One Year Action Plan for Use of Federal CDBG and Home Funds in Fiscal Year 2013-14.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Counselor Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm looking at, on page 81, and it says these, the funds will be, some of them will augment the Business Development Fund, and that the, will result in the creation of jobs for low-income persons. Is there any requirement that the jobs pay a certain level of, I mean, it could be minimum wage, or?
There is no pay requirement. There is a qualifications requirement, that certain positions be held open to people of lower qualifications, or provide them a step up into higher paying and more qualified positions, skilled positions.
Okay. And then a couple, another sentence or two beyond that, it says, although the program is mainly focused on job creation, commercial revitalization projects that eliminate conditions of slums and blight are also eligible. So my question is, what exactly does that mean? Have you actually loaned, do projects that do that, have they received loans? And what would those projects be?
Well, while it is eligible, typically that would be looked at on a case-by-case basis. We put it in there to allow its eligibility in the action plan. We have to state that we're open to doing that in the event that a case would come to us, of someone who's eligible for a loan to address those issues. Normally, that would be something to increase access to a business, so potential for streetscape improvements, or ADA accessibility requirements, or updating to create a safer entry to a building.
Are you aware of any funds that have actually been dedicated to a project that eliminated conditions of slums and blight?
Not off the top of my head.
Okay. All right. And then my, I just have a comment, I guess, more than anything else. I kind of think that the 17.3% administration fees is alarming. I think that's really high. The way I'm reading this, it's $450,000 for administration, and of the total amount, $350,000 will go to human services, and, I mean, other things, too, but only, there's more for administration that's actually going to human services, and I just, by comparison, the Portland Housing Bureau, which is actually a huge, pretty huge operation with all these different branches, and they deal with all kinds of other agencies, their administration is 7%, and I don't know exactly, I guess, I don't expect it now, but I mean, I'd kind of like to explore this and try to get some explanation of why. It just seems to me inordinately high.
I can offer a few explanations.
You know, if I go to a business and I see that their administration fees, almost any business, really, that I can think of, off the top of my head, and I see, oh, my gosh, your administration, 17%? Wow. I would say, wow.
HUD does allow up to 20% to be used for administration, and these are not direct staff costs. If you look to Attachment A, $360,000 of that, so almost matching our contribution to the Human Services Commission, is for direct staff costs. The central service allocation accounts for $70,000 of the administration, and then our fair housing activities to enforce a fair housing law throughout the community accounts for another $20,000 of that.
Okay. What exactly is the central service allocation?
Counselor Brown, I think we were way over time.
Want another round?
No. I can ask out of school later, send an email. Thank you.
Counselor Surratt, maybe we'll keep time on this one?
Hopefully, I won't take my full time. So I just had a couple of questions, and I apologize, I mean, they're on topic, but they're not necessarily things that are specifically in this recommendation, which I think are good and valuable services, but I wanted to know, I know we've been looking for St. Vincent de Paul, St. Vincent de Paul is trying to put together funding for the quote-unquote wetbeds, housing, housing that doesn't require people to be sober in order to have safe shelter, and I was wondering, there was anything in this plan regarding that, or if you had any update on that effort?
I don't have an update as to St. Vincent de Paul's wet housing plan. I haven't heard anything, any updates related to that since we've last spoke to it, about it as a group. This funding is germane to projects like that. A temporary solution, which is what I think the original St. Vincent de Paul's proposal was, would not work with this funding. These are more for permanent, you know, permanent projects. But council, just in the past year, has approved two projects, one being the quadrupling of the Lynnholm Center, run by St. Vincent de Paul to address homeless day services, and also just two weeks ago, approved home funding for our sponsor's Bathy Cottage, which will be a one-of-a-kind, in the state of Oregon, group home for ex-offending women with children. So there is, there are possibilities with this funding.
Thanks for that. That's great. And then I'm, my next question, I know this funding can't be used for that, but it's going to be germane, I think, to our conversation on Wednesday, and that's looking for funds that we could use for more emergency temporary shelter, whether that's vouchers for motel rooms, days, or campsite kinds of things. So I don't know if you have any information about that right now, but that would be something I think we'd want for Wednesday.
Okay, I don't have anything right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselors Alinkin?
Yeah, Michael, you went over the administration costs a little quickly. About two-thirds of the way down, page 80, has the three categories. Could you go over them a little bit more and explain them?
Sure. Direct staff expenses are basically what staff's paid to administer the program, monitor it. That includes not only this year's projects, but any projects remaining from past years that we're still closing out or monitoring. And some of those can go back to 20 years of monitoring, especially for the home program, so.
How many FTE is that?
I don't have that number in front of me. It's broken out through a number of different employees in community development.
A little bit of a bunch of people?
Depending how much time we spend working on specific projects or in the program administration piece of it. We often do several different things, working across different programs, so we bill our time accordingly. I'd be happy to supply our budgeted time or a breakout of that, if that's requested. Central service allocation is a fee that, and I'm not the best person to speak to this, is a fee that community development pays back to the city for services the city provides. It's a rent of sorts for our building and a number of other maintenance, kind of like an HOA, as I understand it. Fair housing services, we contract with the Fair Housing Council of Oregon to run audits of fair housing, potential fair housing abuses in the city, as well as operating a hotline for people who feel they've been unfairly or unjustly discriminated against while seeking housing, or unjustly kicked out of housing. We contract with them for $20,000. We've kept our staffing expenses in CDBG flat for at least the past decade, so $450,000 has remained steady.
For 10 years. Thank you.
Counselor Brown, did you have any other question before we move on?
Could you just go over the central, central service allocation one more time, please? I think I missed part of it.
You know, I could probably weigh in a little bit on that, and essentially, what we do is are some central service, services that all the various funds pay their fair share of, and so some of it could be facilities and energy charges, but it's also things like finance staff, part of it's our human resources staff, some of it are those, some of it's probably some of our attorney's staff, where they're pooled costs, and then they're distributed out to the rest of the organization, and they all pay their fair share.
Okay, thank you.
Are we ready to vote on this? Okay. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and none in opposition, it passes. Thank you. So now, we are ready for our final item, and that is the ratification of Intergovernmental Relations Committee actions of March 13th, 20th, and April 3rd. And Lisa Gardner's going to take us through this.
And I can be as quick as you'd like me to be. I can tell you, I was going to give you a more detailed update on the legislative session. I can do that via email if you like. What I can tell you in a nutshell is that most of the bills that we're supporting are moving forward, and only one that we priority want to oppose so far is still moving, but we believe we have an opportunity to kill that one in the Senate. I'm happy to just give you a quick email update on that, and then you can ask me any questions you have. Of the bills in front of you tonight that were not unanimous, there's really only two that are active, live bills. Last Thursday was the first dead bill deadline, so you can go through all of them, and I can point you through them, or we could just take action on those two, which are consistent with.
Let's just do the live ones.
Yes.
The live ones, okay. So the sort of most critical live one that I'd like to point you to was from the April 17th meeting, and it's, excuse me, House Joint Resolution 8. That's one that you've actually taken action on in a different form of Senate. Joint Resolution 10, which was the bill that was the reset at sale, consistent with the LSU priorities, as a full council, you voted on last August as having approved. And so that's one that I'd like for us to continue to be able to support. League of Oregon City's positioned on that one, consistent with your past position. So that's the first one, if you want to, go ahead and.
All right, you want to put that one out on the, you can find it?
HJR 8, bottom of.
It's bottom of, of AIS, it's on the third page.
Yeah, I got it. I move that the City Council take a position to support Priority 1 on HJR 8.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Mike. I mean, Mr., yeah. Counselor Clark?
I'll make this quick, because I can count, but I opposed this at IGR because I hate to see the chipping away and the slow, the slow chipping away of Measure 5. I thought it was an effective tool, and I think it was a good thing. So I hate to see us slowly chiseling away at the taxpayer in this fashion.
I'd just like to chisel fast.
And many are aware of that.
I believe we're chiseling here.
All right. All those, all those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, in opposition, one.
Surprise.
It passes. Okay, at least you're consistent.
Thank you.
All right, and next.
I guess I would say the rest of the bills, none are actively moving. They may not have been declared dead yet, but I think we can wait till next Monday to go through them. I'm happy to go through them and prepared to, if you'd like me to.
What was the one on?
Do you want to go through them, anybody?
If they're, if they're dead.
They're, they're not actively moving. I mean, I hesitate to say that they're all dead, but there are ones that can certainly wait till next Monday, so House Bill.
Even Senate 670?
Senate 670, you can certainly, we can talk about that one, and I can, I can jump to that if you like. So Senate 670 is, it doubles the exemption from taxation for, from personal property from $12,500 to $25,000. It's not actively moving. It may, it may still move, and we can certainly bring that back, but it's one that we had Counselors Clark and Polling voting no on the staff oppose on this bill, so they did not, and Counselor Taylor voting to support the staff bill, the staff recommendation to oppose.
I think Counselor Polling would like to make a comment.
My opinion is if there's, if it's not officially dead, I think we should go ahead, even if there's the slightest possibility that any of these may continue on, I think we need to give staff direction on those, just in the event that the ones that are not moving right now may pick up legs and move next week. So I think we should go ahead and address.
This one?
Well, address the ones that are still active, but not officially, or.
Then this would fall into that category. So this is relating to property tax exemption for personal property prescribed in effective date. It increases the ceiling amount of total assessed value of taxable personal property for purposes of exemption from property taxation. Applies to property tax years beginning on or after July 1, 2014. So this is one that our staff recommendation was to, I'm sorry, he actually just had an oppose, he didn't have a priority level on it. It was Larry Hill, who unfortunately was not able to be here tonight because of a family emergency.
Senate 670, yeah. Okay. So I will put a motion out that the council take a position of.
Support 2.
Support Priority 2.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. We had this at IGR and didn't make a motion for which George and I, I sense would have voted yes, because I sensed Betty may not have. And so, since this was automatically going to come to council, the split vote, we didn't, but I think we would have likely voted two to one to support at IGR. This particular bill is one that provides an opportunity that I think all of us should support. We spent the first hour and a half of our evening talking about an incentive for very large companies, most often, to be able to build things, and the tax incentives they get for doing so. This is an opportunity to incentivize local small businesses. It changes the property taxes that they can exempt, that they pay on small personal property or business property for the small business owner from $12,000 to $25,000. So your average little home-started, home-start business that has computer equipment of any kind, the mom and pop that could use a break in these times in making their small business go, this is an opportunity for them to get a break, and I'm entirely in favor of it.
Counselor Polling?
When we first started discussing, when we first started discussing this at the IGR, I was inclined to go with the staff recommendation of oppose until Counselor Clark spoke up, and it didn't even dawn on me, you know, a vast majority of the economic development that's occurring within Lane County is small businesses. You know, I was over in Spreeville over the weekend at the Sprouts Celebration, their second annual celebration, and there was one company there, it was just a startup brewery, just getting started, and all the possibilities that are out there for these young men that are, I'm assuming they were young men, because that's all that was, the people we're talking to, are trying to start up this small business, all the possibilities out there for them to take advantage of something like this, and without something like this in place, it could, you know, cause them not to expand or even grow their company. So I changed my mind, and that's why I'm taking the position I am, because we are looking at trying to address the smaller, smaller businesses within our community, and this would be a great asset to them.
Before I call on Counselor Surratt, Lisa, could you please just briefly go over Larry's, the reason he had an opposed position?
That was going to be my question.
Okay. Let me pull that out. I'm just wanting it on the record.
Give me one second.
I've got it.
You've got it right there?
Yes.
You want to read it, George?
Okay, I can do it. Actually, I can't, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
He actually doesn't.
It would cost the county the property tax money.
All it says is Senate Bill 670 would double the exemption from taxation for personal property from $12,500 to $25,100. I estimate the revenue loss from this change would be about $225,000, and that was from Larry Hill.
So it's basically on loss of revenue.
Loss of revenue.
Right.
Revenue to the city or the county?
City.
To the cities. And I will tell you that the reason I was lukewarm on pushing it for tonight was just because there's been no activity on it since February, and it's not scheduled, it may get scheduled next week, but there's such a backlog of things that moved out of committee last week to the floor, that it's not likely to get scheduled before we come, before you meet again. So my preference was to bring Larry here, who has a lot more knowledge about the ins and outs of these bills, of this particular finance bill, and he was intended to be here tonight.
It's already out here, so.
Yeah.
Can we move to table?
Yeah.
Counselor Clark?
I was just going to say, I certainly would be interested in more information about who, who has the revenue loss, which government entity, but we, the, and I think it's the county, I'm not sure that, but perhaps I'm wrong. But one of the things that we've talked about several times with the IGR and the discussion around these state bills, that I think we should keep better in mind, is not just the impact on the organization that we're in essence the board of directors for, but how it affects folks in our community. I think the effect of legislation is more important filtered through the thought of how does it affect folks that we represent, more than the city as an organization.
Before I move to you, Counselors Alink, Counselor Surratt, did you get what you needed, or?
Uh, yes.
Okay, Counselors Alink.
Well, I'd like to hear more about this bill and have a little bit more time to think about it, and hear from Larry Hill about it as well, and if you could get us the text of the bill.
So you're going to move to table?
And so I move to table.
There's a sec.
I'll second that.
Moved and. Moved and seconded, not debatable. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, in opposition, one, two, three, so it's tabled. Okay.
And I can update you if it, in fact, ceases to exist within the next week, so.
Is there anything else that we need to cover?
Nope, I don't believe so. There's just one correction to the AIS under House Bill, let's see, I'm sorry. Correction to House Bill 2857, it's, which reduces the amount payable to municipal or justice court deposits. It says the staff recommendation was priority one oppose, it was a priority one support. So that's just an administrative correction.
Hey, I, for the good of the order, it's, the bill is dead, but I thought you had interest in it, and you should know about it, is that the bill that would try to, on inclusionary zoning, has, yes, it's, it did die. So once again, we have not succeeded in getting that issue dealt with. Okay, go ahead.
I move to ratify the IGR committee's unanimous actions on bills at the March 13, March 20, and April 3, 2013 IGR committee meetings.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Okay, I see nobody in the queue. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, it passes. So with that, we're done with the business of the day. Thank you. Yes. I guess. 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 I guess.